Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian Gilbert is here from Brookwood Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Sam Bowman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. Holy Father, we thank you for just the beautiful day that you have given us. Father, we thank you for the privilege of prayer, that we can call upon you anytime and all the time, that you've given us that wonderful right through your Son, the Lord Jesus. Father, we just come, and I thank you for our mayor and this council. I thank you that our mayor is a man of vision. And Father, I thank you for all the exciting things happening in our city. Lord, I just pray that you would give this council, this mayor, wisdom from above. Lord, we gather knowledge to accumulate all the facts, and wisdom comes from above by doing the right thing. Lord, help us to trust in you with all of our heart, lean not on our own understanding, acknowledging you in all of our ways, honoring you, Lord, that we might find your favor. Lord, we just now, most of all, thank you for your love, that you've bestowed upon us, that we're even able to be called your children, and that's by your grace. Thank you, Father. It's in the wonderful name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Melissa, do you want to come forward? We have a wonderful relationship with Oklahoma City University, and from time to time when they put on a new performance, we are honored to have a couple of the performers come over there and kind of give us a sneak preview of what's going to be available on the OCU campus. And this morning, we have Duke Anderson, who's from Dallas, Texas, and Melissa Silver, who's from New Hampshire, who are currently Oklahoma City University students. They're getting ready to perform an opera double feature, Poliachi and Gianni Schicchi. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
God, I knew I wouldn't get it right. But it was, it's close enough, I suppose. Do you all want to use the microphone, or would you rather not use the microphone? Okay. They're each going to sing a song, and then they have to be at class at nine o'clock. And apparently, you can't be late for dance class. And so, we're going to, we're going to allow them to go first this morning. Thank you all so much, and when you're finished, we'll tell people a little bit more about the performance and how people can buy tickets.
(Singing) Oh, my darling, oh, won't you be my friend, oh, you know, my lovely you show. I cannot live without him, oh, please do not refuse me. He is my bride, oh, I love him, oh, he will be married, oh, shall be lost forever. (Singing) My darling, oh, oh, I'd rather die.
That was wonderful. Now, when can we see these performances?
You can see them on Friday and Saturday evening of this coming weekend at eight o'clock, and on Sunday afternoon at three o'clock at Oklahoma City University.
And?
We did leave some flyers, if you want numbers to the box office, so they're right on these two seats right here.
I'll pass them out to the council. All right? And so, it's this weekend coming up, and people can get tickets by doing what?
You can, you can call ahead at 405-208-5522, or you can order them online at www.okcu.edu/music.
We're proud of both of you, and we're certainly proud of Oklahoma City University. Thank you all so much for coming down here this morning. All right. This should, to show our appreciation. Not sure who wants to follow that, but, but it falls to our tennis component here, so I'll ask Mark and Steve and Brad to come up forward. We are so proud of the Oklahoma City Tennis Center. We have been selected as the Facility of the Year in the Missouri Valley Division. And you'll recall, we kind of took the Tennis Center in a new direction about a year ago, and it is paying huge dividends to the improvements that it made out there, and certainly our tennis players are making up. And Mark, I can't thank you enough for your, your interest and your investment in our Tennis Center. It's been a wonderful relationship so far. I get wonderful feedback of how much the facility has improved, and, and I think the operations are going well, the pro shop looks better, the court looks better. The whole place has just been such an improvement over where it was just a few years ago, so thank you very much on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City. And we have, trying to think what we have. We have a commendation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Yes, we have a citation. Whereas the Oklahoma City Tennis Center has been named the 2010 Facility of the Year by the United States Professional Tennis Association for the Missouri Valley Division, which includes Oklahoma, Kansas, Iowa, Missouri, and Nebraska. And whereas the USPTA has over 15,000 members worldwide and is the world's oldest and largest association of tennis teaching professionals. Whereas in January of 2010, Mark Allen and Brad Lund formed OKC Public Tennis LLC, and the company assumed the management of Oklahoma City's 24-court public tennis facility. Whereas numerous capital improvements were made in 2010, including a complete remodel of the clubhouse, the build-out of a ground-level permanent concession stand, upgrades to the stately grounds and flower beds, and wall of champions honoring the many high school tennis champions in Oklahoma over the decades was added as an historical feature. Whereas, under the direction of Steve Henry, director of tennis and teaching professional Jenny Marcos, many new programs were implemented in 2010, including after-school tennis drill groups, cardio tennis, quick start junior tennis, Tennis Across America clinic, and junior team tennis. Whereas the facility continued to host the OSSAA State Girls and Boys Tennis Championships in May, over 4,000 attended the four-day competition, and during the tournament, many fan-friendly features were added, including the telecast of match results and court assignments via four flat-screen televisions on-site, and formal award ceremonies were held to recognize the team and individual champions. And whereas, the Tennis Center also unveiled Friends of Oklahoma City, a nonprofit group directed by Brad Lund that generates revenue for capital improvements to the facility with donations. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby recognize and commend Steve Henry, Mark Allen, and Brad Lund for their hard work and dedication to the success of the Oklahoma City Tennis Center, which has resulted in the center receiving its first USPTA Facility of the Year award.
Let's show our appreciation to this commitment to tennis. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate all the support the city's given us, and we look forward to a lot of great things happening.
And weather's getting better. People are going to be heading out, Steve.
That's true. It's, springtime's around the corner, and we're ready to get rolling.
All right. And lessons will be starting pretty soon. If people want to get out this year and make 2011 their, their year to learn how to play tennis, what should they do?
Well, call us at 946-2739. We have a website, okc-tenniscenter.net. Outdoor lessons will begin March 1st, after-school clinics the week right after spring break.
All right. And we know about the Tennis Center course at, at Will Rogers, but also at Early Wine. It's a wonderful facility as well.
Yep. We have 12 outdoor courts there, and all the programming really that we have at the Tennis Center is also duplicated at Early Wine.
All right. Thanks very much for what you're doing. Brad, I know you kind of helped put this deal together. It's got to be a very fulfilling to see it, to come and be the star of the Missouri Valley this fast.
Well, after a nine-year absence last week, we were awarded a men's pro tour stop, and this is the USTA Pro Circuit. These players will be ranked about number 100 to 300 in the world, and that event is around the corner, March 26th through April 3rd, so just about a month from now, pro tennis will be at our wonderful public facility.
That is, that is so cool. Well, thanks very much. Let's show our appreciation more time, Mark. Thank you. Now, we are going to honor our Oklahoma City Public School Teacher of the Month. Why don't all four of you come up, if that's all right? Lisa Ummel Ingram is the Teacher of the Month, and she's being honored by the Oklahoma City Public School Foundation and the Rotary Club of downtown Oklahoma City. Go over here. Didn't mean to stop you all over in the corner. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and we'll get settled.
Whereas Lisa Ummel Ingram has been named Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for February 2011. Whereas Lisa Ummel Ingram teaches fifth grade drama at Wheeler Elementary and has served Oklahoma City Public Schools for 16 years. Whereas Lisa Ummel Ingram has been honored as the Wilson Elementary 2010-2011 Building Teacher of the Year, and she is a finalist for the 2011-12 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year. Whereas Lisa Ummel Ingram is a National Board Certified Teacher and Oklahoma State University Writing Project Teacher Consultant, and has served in the United States Air Force. Whereas Lisa Ummel Ingram has the goal to provide an environment in which students can acquire meaningful learning that is transferable to the lives they lead now and to their future lives. Whereas Lisa actively engages her students so that the students learn to take ownership and responsibility for their own success and play an active role in acquiring their education. Whereas Lisa is described as a master teacher who is an exceptional educator and advocate for students. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Lisa Ummel Ingram on her selection as February 2011 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, on this one, we have to vote, so this is where the suspense comes in, because it's not official unless we can get five votes for you. Okay? Do we have a motion? And a second. All right. Look up here now. And look at that, it's unanimous. You are the Teacher of the Month. Let's show our appreciation.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting us here today, and thank Robin and the Oklahoma City Schools Foundation for supporting teachers, hard-working teachers in our city. I want to thank my principal and my husband for being here with me today.
Thank you very much for what you're doing on a daily basis. Thank all of you, and let's show our appreciation one more time.
Mayor, if I could, while you're coming up, just make a quick comment. Generally, the teacher is recognized Tuesday at the Rotary Club lunch. In addition to this, and today, there's a joint meeting between the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, and the Kuonis that happens once a year, and so that lunch has been deferred. But when she has an opportunity to attend lunch, Lisa will receive a $500 gift card to be able to use in her classroom as she sees fit, and that's a gift from the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order, and we're on item 3B. We need to defer this item for a week or two. Can someone make a referral for a week or two? And we'll bring this back at some point in the future. But we need to vote on that. We have a second. Cast your votes on item 3B.
For one week?
Let's make it two weeks.
Okay, March?
March 8th. All right, that item is deferred. Move on to item 4. This is Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 15th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 8th.
Move the other second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on item 4A and B. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have one this morning. On page 11, item 8E1B, it's claims for denial. It's a claim of Carla Morgan. It's 8E1B, and you may remember, this is the lady with the junk removal lien certified against her property who appeared before the council about two weeks ago, and we have negotiated a settlement agreement with her. I promised her, I know, along the lines, it was suggested at the meeting, and so she will be repaying that over time in a payment, and we'll have that agreement before council on March 8th. So I think we had a pretty good resolution to that issue.
And that will allow the lien to be released against your property. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting, convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There is one item.
Move the item.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items.
Move the items.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. PPA passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA, reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the other two.
All right. Are there any individual considerations?
I'd like to make a comment on several projects, starting with 16T, as in Thomas.
Okay. And?
6O.
Skip and Sam both want to speak on O. Okay. Pat, you want to get started with item 16?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the first of a couple of items that deal with a joint project with the county commissioners to do some road improvement. I wanted to compliment our Public Works Department and the work they've done to put this agreement into effect, and then to point out the value to our citizens of this kind of a project where we get to share the cost, to leverage our road, our limited road dollars as much as we can to improve roads throughout the city. So I just wanted to pass along a compliment to the Public Works on the finds out they did.
All right. Any other item, Pat? Okay. Gary, item J.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about, this is a, the project that's going to redo the Ed Lichen Conservatory out in Will Rogers Park. That's the Lord and Burnham building that dates back to the early 1900s, and it's a project that's been needed for a long time. We were concerned that we couldn't get this done before Lord and Burnham Parks were still available for that, so, but we are doing that out there. We heard about the Tennis Center earlier this morning, and with the Conservatory being redone at Will Rogers, it just continues the whole rejuvenation of that park, and I'm really looking forward to that.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned that. I was, I played frisbee golf on Sunday evening with my kids out at Will Rogers, and was surprised that you have taken out some of the older trees, I think, that needed to be kind of cleaned out, but the park just looked, as good as you, a park can look in February. I mean, let's be honest, it's February in Oklahoma, so there's a limit. There's no, there's no leaves on the trees, but, and the, the park was packed. I mean, you literally had to wait for the group ahead of you to finish the hole, so you could play your hole of frisbee golf.
Yeah, the park's really shaping up. If, springtime, when the flower garden gets really going good, I would recommend people get out there. What we've been able to do with our city monies and the grants that we received from the Margaret Annis Boys Trust out there in the garden is just remarkable. It's a really neat place to go, and the Conservatory redo will really just enhance that.
Yeah, a lot of history out there, too. You get glimpses of it. All right. Skip, you want to start with item O first?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I would just like to find out, I've had several calls about part of the Katy Trail being blocked off, and, and I'm wondering if this is the, the reason, and if so, what's the timeframe as it relates to the Oklahoma Corporation Commission, what the issue is there?
This amendment really doesn't have anything to do with, with the blocking off of the trail. The contractor was required to do some relocation of the trail because it wasn't built according to plans and specs. When they got into the relocation of the trail, some gasoline was discovered in the ground, so we had to engage a consultant to work with the Corporation Commission, and we think that the, the source of the gasoline is the Oklahoma City Public School Maintenance Facility that's just to the west. That's an ongoing situation. Our consultant is working with the public schools and the Corporation Commission. I'll try to get you a timeframe on what we're looking at. I'm, I'm really not sure of the, of the timeframe right now.
Much of the, the calls that I received, Dennis, were from people who are, I think they were slight off of 16th and Grand, that they, that it's blocked off there, but that's the reason, because of this issue right here?
The reason is because of the contaminated soil.
Okay.
Right. And this amendment doesn't really have anything to do with that. This is some other work that, that had to be done that was different than, than what was on the, the original plans and specs, and we're trying to pay the contractor for that additional work, and it really has nothing to do with the, with the reason that the trail's blocked.
Okay. Item O, Sam?
Thanks, Mayor. Dennis, I've noticed from time to time, and I don't know whether it's due to the, to the soil contamination or just erosion, that parts of that trail have just crumbled. And I've talked to Larry Ogiloh less than a year ago on a section between the Railroad Museum and, and the schoolyard, and that's, that's been remedied. But my concern was, as I see some of this using that trail, to what extent are we covered if the erosion or contamination is beyond the $35,000 or $38,000 that we're extending the contract to cover? What if we find it's beyond that?
Well, if the contamination came from the public school maintenance facility, that's going to be on, on them to remedy that and remediate that. Again, this, this funding that's in this amendment doesn't have anything to do with, with the contaminated soil issue. It has to do with some other work that the contractor had to do that was beyond the scope of his original contract.
And if we find that that work or further erosion has, has, part of it has been remedied, or maybe all of it up there near the Railroad Museum, if we find that it's, it's more than this?
There's still, there's still, we haven't finalized the contract out. There's still funding, there's still money in the contract that we're holding back from the contractor. This, this does not close the contract out.
This $38,000 is not.
Right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Puts us on to item 7. This is the concurrence docket.
(Inaudible).
All right. Looks like there's 12 items. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Now we're on to item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. Item 8A is a zoning case in Ward 6. The address is 108 North Villa Avenue. It's currently R1, single-family residential. It would become an I1 light industrial district. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak to the issue?
I'm here, I have a question. Yes, I have a question. I have a question.
Great. Well, there were no protests at the Planning Commission. It was approved. This is a request from a church in, to move this from single-family to I-light industrial, and I think there was some discussion, Bob, early on about, a request for it to move to I2, and we backed off to I1. Any comments?
No, they, it's consistent with the pattern developing there, and...
Great, thank you. Having no protests, I would move approval, please.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item B is a zoning case in Ward 2. This would close a portion of several streets adjacent to block 111 through 114. It's in the North Oklahoma City addition, just east of Klassen Boulevard between Northwest 58th and Northwest 62nd Streets. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. These closings, this has been some time in coming, that we have before us today, do still allow access for the few remaining residents on 61st and 62nd to get out north to 63rd Street, so move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8B. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 8C deals with some handicap parking. How about a motion there?
Move it.
All right. Cast your votes on item 8C, and it passes unanimously. Item 8D has been deferred. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then item 8E, it's claims recommended for denial. Looks like we have one item left, and that person has signed up to speak. Would Donna Geiger please come forward? Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here.
We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, it's Donna Geiger, 10317 Basswood Canyon Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Okay, and what can you tell us about this item?
Well, I had a, I've been, I'm a teacher for 37 years, and just retired this year, and bam, all of a sudden, I had a flat, a flood. The month, as soon as I retired, I thought, man, I can travel well. Not so, because my little savings was saved up, and I had this flood at the house. And on, on June 21st, I had a flood, and I had to call, I called my insurance, I called the city department, and I also had to have a cleanup done, and it was just soup, it was just sewage everywhere, everywhere. And also, I, I got a scope, and I've got letters saying that, from Mr. England, the Bethany Plumbing Company, that the sewer was stopped up in the main. And also, I've got a video, I had a scope guy come out and scope it, and on the video, I've got it with me if you need to see it. I turned one into, to you guys earlier, a video inspector, and it said that the main was blocked up. And also, my home insurance, Hartford Insurance, they came out and they did an investigation, and they said it was the, the main was stopped up. In fact, I've got a letter from them, from Hartford, right here.
Okay.
And also, I had you guys come out, you guys were out about eight different times. I have a main hole in the back of my...
Item eight D has been deferred. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then item eight E, is Claims Recommended for Denial. Looks like we have one item left, and that person has signed up to speak. Would Donna Geiger please come forward?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here.
We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, it's Donna Geiger, 10317 Basswood Canyon Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Okay, and what can you tell us about this item?
Well, I had a, I've been, I'm a teacher for 37 years and just retired this year, and bam, all of a sudden I had a flat, a flood. The month, as soon as I retired, I thought, man, I can travel well. Not so, because my little savings was saved up, and I had this flood at the house. And on, on June 21st, I had a flood, and I had to call, I called my insurance, I called the city department, and I also had to have a cleanup done, and it was just soup, it was just sewage everywhere, everywhere. And also, I, I got a scope, and I've got letters saying that, from Mr. England, the Bethany Plumbing Company, that the sewer was stopped up in the main. And also, I've got a video, I had a scope guy come out and scope it, and on the video, I've got it with me if you need to see it. I turned, went into, to you guys earlier, a video inspector, and it said that the main was blocked up. And also, my home insurance, Hartford Insurance, they came out and they did an investigation. And they said it was the, the main was stopped up. In fact, I've got a letter from them, from Hartford, right here.
Okay.
And also, I had you guys come out, you guys were out about eight different times. I have a main hole in the back of my, my house, you know? And I've got documents right here saying that you guys unplugged that. And you want to see those?
Yeah, I'd like to see them.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and I just, the damages, that's what I'm seeking, because it was, it was quite a bit.
Yeah, I can imagine how much of an impact this could make on a budget.
It isn't, because my budget's very slim now.
Why don't I ask our staff to come forward and, and give us an explanation? And typically, Donna, what, what occurs here is that if, within state law parameters, if we have some discretion, we typically can discuss it and, and decide what the appropriate thing to do is. But sometimes state law does not allow a municipality to pay in cases like this, which ties our hands. We would not legally be able to pay the claim. So let me find out from information.
Okay.
What our staff's legal opinion is on this particular case is, can you, what can you tell us that, that occurred here?
Amy Harrison, Municipal Counselor's Office. Our first notice of a problem with this claimant's line was on June 22nd, which was the day after Ms. Geiger's sewer backup. So we had no prior notice of a problem on this line prior to Ms. Geiger's damages.
Okay.
And I would also point out that all of her damages are related to the June 21st backup, and that there were no damages claimed for the, for anything that happened, any backup that happened after that.
Okay. So I'm afraid to ask the answer, and is it your opinion, then, that, that state law does not allow the council the discretion to pay this claim, that we're prohibited from paying it?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, yeah, go ahead.
The reason it took so long is because my insurance company was investigating Hartford. You know, they, they were investigating, and I've got all the letters and documents on that. That's why it took them so long to do this.
Okay, if you, what we're, what we're saying, though, is the municipality would have to have some sort of advance notice that there was an issue prior to flooding.
Okay, I'm sorry. I called that day that it happened. I called you guys that day.
This has to be prior, though. That's, that's, that's the awkwardness of the state law, that we have worked legislatively to try and get altered, but we've not been able to. And so I know it sounds confusing to think that you would have to report a problem before the problem actually developed, but that's the way state law is stated, and that's the law that we have to follow.
Even though I've got proof that it was the backup, and you guys were over at my house about, probably eight different times.
Do you have any proof that we were there but prior to the flooding?
Not prior, no, because I...
That, see, that's, that's the critical element here that would not allow the council to pay it. We would actually be breaking the law if we paid the claim under the facts that were given here today.
Okay.
I am so sorry.
Can I have that proof back that you guys have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
It doesn't, it doesn't help this woman with this case, but could we, we haven't for some time, City Manager, could we take a look back at the three previous years and see? It seems like we're gaining on this. When I say gaining, that there are less and less of them, doesn't make this case any better, that it's, it might be less than the year before. But with the remedies that we have taken in terms of requiring the backflow, all new, all new installations have to have sewer backflow valves. Could we just take a look and see what our history has been comparatively the last three years?
I think we'd be happy to, yeah. We'll do a City Manager Report and talk, and go back on some history, and go back a ways, and see what, what type of progress we have made on this area.
All right, we're voting on item eight E. Do we have a motion? Second, cast your votes, and item eight E passed unanimously. We're on to item nine. This is Claims Recommended for Approval. We have one item. We have a motion and a second on item nine. Claims Recommended for Approval. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And ten is items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Thank you, I just a couple of quick comments. First of all, a week or so ago, we had a project in here that impacted the Northwest Library. I asked for information regarding the scheduling of the library. And I, apparently because of the adverse weather we've had the last month or so, it's running behind what our original schedule called for. And the completion now will probably be midsummer, and then there'll be a few weeks' delay after it's completed, or, or time period, not a delay necessarily, but time period where the furniture's moved in, the computers have moved in. So our opening date now probably is going to be late summer, early fall, at that library, fully open and functional. The second comment I'd like to make is, I was out this weekend in Quail Creek Park. It's a small neighborhood park in the Quail Creek neighborhood, and it was very heavily used. And the, the facilities are a very nice playground, and some shelters, and some walkways through the park. It's a joint venture with the city and the, and the Quail Creek Homers Association. But it demonstrated to me that there's a real value in these small neighborhood parks. You don't have to have an enormous amount of facilities or build a super park to address the needs of our public. People could walk there. I saw a lot of mothers with scholars, babies and kids in them, and so it's a, provided a real service for our community. And I think as, as we go forward planning our parks, we need to, to not outlaw or dismiss the value of these neighborhood parks, small pocket parks. I know that they provide an additional maintenance burden on our Parks Department, but they do provide significant value for our citizens. Should consider my, if we go forward.
All right. Skip?
I would just like to echo the, the same comments that relates to parks that Councilman Ryan just stated. I have a very similar situation with a park that I've been very engaged with, and that's Lincoln Park. And it is a park that is directly in the heart of three strong communities, and, and there has been some improvement at the park, and it's been well-received, and the, the citizens are taking advantage of some of the outdoor, the outdoor exercise equipment that's part of the park. And I would just like to see, you know, the same thing as far as a greater amount of, of attention from parks and recreation in reference to the budgeting as it relates to providing activities and beautification issues for the park. So I, I agree with that 100%. I would also like to thank, I didn't get a chance to do this last, last week, but the last snowstorm, and there's an area that we have had continued challenges with because it's not on the snow route, and that's Hefner Road. But we're beginning to see a lot more participation from the city with our county commissioners as it relates to certain projects that really benefit all the citizens in the, in the county and in the city of Oklahoma City. Commissioner Brian Bond has done a great job as it relates to a lot of the cleanup work in the city, and especially the graffiti. And I would like to thank him and also Commissioner Willa Johnson in assisting in a, a project as it related to Hefner Road on the, the last snowstorm, in which she was able to get one of her crews out to give some assistance the night of the snowstorm. And so I would just like to thank our county commissioners for the relationships that they're building with the city that I haven't seen in a long time as it relates to a lot of these type of services that really benefit all of our citizens.
All right, Skip, thank you. Meg? All right, Brian? Keith? Larry?
Just thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to compliment the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association. They had a great meeting this past Saturday. I'd like to thank the Windsor Hills Theater for opening up their facility so that we could have a Saturday meeting that was very well-attended. And then, Jim, if you pass along to Marcia Slaughter, there's a sewer project in Windsor Hills that is just coming into its completion, and two of the representatives from the company and two of Marcia's people were in attendance at the meeting. They gave a brief status report. At the end of the status report, one of the citizens who was very much affected by the construction stood and just gave a glowing praise of how well the project was handled, how the contractor bent over backwards to try to save some trees which were in the way of the project. And it was just a, and everybody clapped. And that's the first time I've ever been to a project of that magnitude, disrupted so many people, that the people clapped in appreciation for it. So if you pass that along to Marcia, I'd really appreciate that.
I'd be happy to do that.
And then Saturday night, we had the privilege of going to a chili cookout at the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association. And the neighbors there brought to, to the attention of the people in attendance, an idea of, a way for neighbors to minister to elderly people who might need some extra help. And it just struck me that this is Oklahoma City volunteerism at, at its grassroots level. And if you don't have a neighborhood association in your area, my encouragement is to get one, and if you have one, stay in tune and go to the meetings and get involved, because it's a way that neighbors can reach out and help neighbors. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sam?
Mayor, just adding to the comments of Councilman Kelly and Councilman Ryan. Friday evening at 5:30, about 5:30, beautiful evening down Ward Six, Magwali Post Park, south of the River on Robinson. There were, it was like, what's it called before the game?
The tailgate party?
Tailgate party.
Good to know about that.
The hamburgers and hot dogs at 5:30, it was like a Fourth of July weekend. It was just packed park.
What day was this?
Friday night, beautiful night. You know, I think it just goes to show that we are really beginning to see the fruits of the last two bond issues. And with Mr. Ryan's point about the particular emphasis on our small parks where our neighborhoods are enjoying them, they really work. Just a, it's just a really...
Wiley Post Park is a whole new place. People haven't been there in five years. It is an amazing, I, I spent a Saturday afternoon just kind of walking around it this past summer at all the different events, family reunions that were taking place, and, and different gatherings, and the, and the spray grounds. And of course, then across the street, you have the skate park, which is, you know, world-class facility as well. And I, you hit the nail on the head. Our bond issue in, in introductions into that park are paying dividends. And remember, we went about 20 years at one time without capital improvements for our parks. We're catching up, but the last 15 years, we've had a lot of work to do. Gary?
Well, just a couple of things. One, I'd like for everybody to keep their prayers flowing for Officer Perry in, in trying to get through the terrible consequences that we had last week, and continues to struggle with that, and I hope everybody keeps their prayers up for him. Also, last week, I attended a reception at the Devon Boathouse for the U.S. Women's Rowing Team that was in town. And walking around, of course, they were pretty remarkable themselves and, and their accomplishments, but walking around, listening to them and other people involved with that Olympic rowing movement, talk about what's going on on the river and what's going on down in the boathouse row and Oklahoma City in general, is very encouraging. It's, we've become the talk of the world, really, not just the United States, but the whole rowing community is talking about what's going on in Oklahoma City. So it was, it was really encouraging to listen to those comments down there.
Yeah, the Devon Boathouse, you know, built with those private funds, is an amazing place. I mean, it's, it's the most technologically advanced rowing facility in the world, and it's just opened on the Oklahoma River. So again, the result of those MAPS investments back in the 1990s. Anybody else want to say anything else? All right, we have a few City Manager Reports.
Mr. Mayor, there's two I want to highlight this morning. You know, it's good to live in the moment, but we're going to take a moment here to, to recognize the past, and then we're going to take the next moment to talk about the future here in a little bit. So with that, Francis Gersey and Catherine Montgomery here, Catherine Montgomery are here this morning to talk about the new exhibit that's going to be at City Hall on the downstairs Oklahoma City Sooner or Later.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's a privilege to be here this morning to inform you about the Oklahoma City Sooner or Later exhibit. First, I'd like to recognize Catherine Montgomery. She's like my co-project manager, and Mickey Graham is going to help with the PowerPoint. And this is just more or less a teaser or a sampler of what the exhibit's going to entail, because to show you everything, we wouldn't need to have an unveiling on, on March 1st. But this project actually started with conversation with Councilman White and myself about four years ago, in, you know, as city clerk, I'm in charge, I'm, I'm the keeper of the historic documents, and somehow making those available to the public to view. And, and he thought that the second-floor lobby would be a great place to do that. So we proceed, we proceeded with this project then last year, and it's called Oklahoma City Sooner or Later. It's a history exhibit that was made possible by a grant from the Oklahoma Humanities Council and the We the People Initiative, National Endowment for the Humanities, with matching funds from the city of Oklahoma City, and donors who include current and previous mayors, council members, city managers, and city employees. And to prepare this project, Oklahoma City partnered with Metropolitan Library System, the Oklahoma Historical Society, the Oklahoma City Museum of Art, the Oklahoma Publishing Company, and Retro Metro OKC to acquire expertise from scholars, historians, and writers. The exhibit will open at 1 o'clock on March 1st with a presentation by Dr. Bob Blackburn, Executive Director of the Oklahoma Historical Society, and 75 Oklahoma City Public School 5th, 7th, and 9th graders. They will be assisting the mayor and council with the unveiling of the exhibit panels. We brought to you today, this is a very small panel. The panels are actually going to be eight feet tall and four feet wide, that will cover the walls of the lobby. And this is an example of the Equality Panel. And what the committee did, we kind of broke the city down into eras, which was real hard to do with the limited funds that we had and the limited times, because Oklahoma City has such an interesting history. So we started, the exhibit begins with a panel called "A New City," and I'll just read you an excerpt of what the, what, one paragraph of the panel states. "When Oklahoma Territory formed in May 1890, Oklahoma City had a population of 4,151 people, and they were finally allowed to have elections again. On August 9th, voters elected Mayor W.J. Gault, a clerk, a judge, a treasurer, and eight aldermen to govern the city. Their first official act created the police force." So the panel's going to give the history of that era of a new city. The next era is the City Manager Plan. "In 1926, voters elected a mayor and a council to represent them. A professional city manager was hired to handle the city's day-to-day business. Having one person as manager was more efficient. The new system provided more services for the people." And I just want to add in here that, doing research on the City Manager Plan, that Jim Couch is the longest-serving city manager in the history of Oklahoma City with 10 years, and I would like, I think he deserves a hand for that.
I'm not sure Jim liked that pointed out from time to time.
Well, longest-serving, yeah, okay. And the next panel is going to be the Growth in the City. This was also a very important era. And a, a quote from the exhibit is "Born in a day and it just got bigger." That's Oklahoma City's story. As railroad, meatpacking, oil, and aviation fueled the economy for the first 60 years, with growth, the city established police and fire stations, built roads, bridges, and created parks. And then the next panel is Equality, which of course we have here in, it's, it's in the PowerPoint. It's broken up in, in two sections because the panels are so large. Equality, here's a quote. "Black sanitation workers went on strike in 1969, demanding wages and working conditions more comparable to those given white city workers. They complained that 85% of the sanitation workforce was black, yet the supervisors were all white. Martin Luther King Jr. had been assassinated not long before while addressing a similar strike in Memphis. Similar strikes in other cities resulted in riots, and intense standoff ensued with the work stoppage in Oklahoma City." And we have a very vibrant history of equality in our city, and I think this is actually one of my favorite panels on, you know, our first elected city councilman and, and what we went through to, to get where we are with equality. And then my next favorite panel is Bringing in the Sun, and that's where citizens began to play a larger role in key government decisions. Citizen advisory committees were appointed. In 1990, a citizen sales tax oversight committee monitored the city's use of funds from a 1989 public safety sales tax. And Neighborhood Alliance served as a liaison between neighborhood associations in the city. And that was a very important era in our government in becoming more transparent. And then it leads us almost to Current Day with the MAPS Panel. And Oklahoma City was on the cusp of celebrating its centennial, but excitement was hard to come by downtown. A 20-year urban renewal effort had ended with mixed results. New office towers filled the skyline, but downtown was left with scarce options for retail, entertainment, and housing. Oklahoma City's elected leaders worked with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber to develop a plan that might bring life back to the inner city. A series of unsuccessful economic development efforts led to the... A series of unsuccessful economic development efforts led to the plan that sparked a $2 million revival." And that is where we are today with the MAPS area, and it includes all three of the MAPS programs. And this exhibit will periodically highlight a city's department's artifacts and historical documents, along with the permanent display. And the Fire Department will be the first city department to exhibit their artifacts. Just to give you an example of some of the things you will see, for the opening, the Fire Department will display the first motorized vehicle purchased in 1910. It will be located outside City Hall. Councilman Marr's grandfather, Deputy Chief Hayden Marr Sr., his 1938 Class A uniform, hat, and badge will be displayed, along with a firefighter wearing a 2010 bunker gear. And the history of the Oklahoma City Fire Department will begin with a four-member volunteer fire company established in 1889. The exhibit will include unseen photos from the Marr's Family Collection and the Oklahoma City Fire Department archives of fire equipment, vehicles, fire stations, firefighters performing their duties during floods, fires, and medical emergencies. The exhibit will conclude with a panel showing the creation of each city department as it exists today, beginning with the hiring of a city clerk, city treasurer, and judge in 1890, and concluding with our youngest department, Information Technology, established in 1998. The exhibit will be unveiled at 1:00 on March 1st. A reception will be held that evening to thank the state and federal officials, the Oklahoma City School Board, and the Oklahoma Humanities Council, and sponsors for their support. The exhibit will be open to the public Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 for self-guided Any questions or comments?
March 1st?
March 1st, next Tuesday.
Okay, and that'll be on the second floor of the city council facility and open to the public?
Exactly.
Terrific.
Yes, sir.
Francis, thank you, and thank everyone. I can tell a lot of people were involved in this. Thank you very much.
Okay, it took a small village to recreate the city.
Mayor?
Yeah, it's good.
I know that that has been a very enduring process to put this together, but we really need to thank our councilman, Pete White, because with his knowledge, and he always referenced to the fact that he's the oldest one, and been around longer than anybody else, and now we're getting to see exactly what he means. And so we want to thank, I personally want to thank Pete, and I think we all should give him a round of applause for his...
If you're as old as they say you are, Pete, in the narrative on my grandfather's coat, I talk about when, how I met my grandmother at a beanery next door to the central fire station. Did you eat there?
You may be appropriate to move on. Mr. Wingers is here today with Mike Mize with ADG to talk a little bit about MAPS 3. Last week, Eric gave you an update on each of the individual projects, and today we're going to talk about some of the criteria we're going to be using for establishing the program implementation plan. Eric?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are proceeding quickly with the MAPS 3 implementation plan, and as one of those early steps, we have ADG, Mike Mize, Nicole Franklin here to present. What we're viewing this month as some of the initial criteria, some of the conceptual project criteria, they have attended since December when we engaged them, many of the subcommittee meetings, the advisory board meetings, they've also looked at council minutes and other meeting minutes, collecting a lot of the information regarding the eight major projects, to try to develop a series of priorities, and they want to make sure that they've got those correct today as they get ready to move forward. Moving forward from February, as we look into the month of March, they're going to be prepared to come back to city council and recommend some conceptual project budgets, a preference for the project order. Again, as a pay-as-you-go program, there is an order that's going to have to be established to make it work. In the April timeframe, we're looking at a council, a joint council advisory board workshop on April 19th, and then in late April or early May, hoping to have that implementation plan adopted by city council so that we can move very quickly forward with some of the major projects. We have advertised, and we talked a little bit last week about some of the early projects, and those are proceeding very quickly. But when we talk about the eight major projects, this is the plan that's going to help us and guide us forward in MAPS 3. We have a presentation again, Mike Mize is here, and they can answer any questions that you may have.
Eric, also introducing Nicole Franklin, who's going to help with the presentation. Mayor, council members, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. What we're here to do today is present the first piece of the implementation plan, which is really helping to define the process by which we will provide you with a final implementation plan. The document you have before you today is an outline of the considerations and criteria which we have developed, as Eric mentioned, with the help of city staff, and a lot of documentation that's been produced in the past about MAPS 3 and about the individual projects. We don't present to have all the answers, so one of the reasons we're here today is to present this to you, to make sure that you've had an opportunity to review the considerations, assumptions, and other criteria that we've put together to try and come up with a prioritization plan, which as Eric mentioned, we will try to present to you in the middle of April. I'm sorry, middle of March, right? Yeah, first, so, yeah. You want to start? Just a little bit of history, I know that you folks have not seen this before, so I'll try to not read all the bullet points, but get through this as quickly and efficiently as we can. We were hired in December, actually began work prior to that, once we were notified that we were going to be working with city staff on this project. And one of our first tasks, obviously, is to produce the implementation plan. Some of the primary assumptions, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, are that the projects are all pay-as-you-go. We understand that no project will be started unless the revenue has been collected that will provide the funds to complete that project. We're expecting an average of about $8 million a month in collections, and we have eight projects which total about $777 million. The more costly projects, obviously, because it's pay-as-you-go, will take more time to collect tax revenue. As a result, we have to factor in inflation in terms of where these projects are on the prioritization schedule. And because of that, we've taken an approach that the budgets that have been provided publicly are midpoint budgets, and projects that come early in the process will have impact, inflation will have a smaller impact on them, so they may actually have a smaller budget than published. Projects which come later in the process will see a greater impact with inflation, so they may have a slightly larger budget than published. You've all seen this, this is a list of the costs, the projected budgets for each of the projects, just listed in order of the most expensive, and once again, these may vary depending on where they fall in the prioritization schedule due to inflation. Some of the general project considerations that we have developed are that some of these projects may have an economic impact, which needs to be considered. Many of the projects will be done in phases, some of those phased projects will be phased based on logical breaks in construction and/or design, site acquisition, some of those, some of the other things that would be, make it logical to break that out into phases. Some may be broken out in phases based on geography, such as the wellness centers, sidewalks, and trails. Some projects are going to require significantly more planning, land acquisition, and engineering than others. We also know that there's going to be a need to coordinate with other city projects, such as other MAPS 3 projects, Project 180, city geo-bonds, potential opportunities for federal funding, Oklahoma State Fair, and other events at the state fairgrounds, major river events, and future convention center events. There are a number of third-party studies, some of which are currently underway, such as the Convention Center Site Selection Committee, the programming committee, or team for the wellness centers. Until those, and until those third-party studies are done, it's going to be difficult to have a scope of work, but we will use, we have a number of consultants available to us who will help us do some preliminary planning and programming so that when we come to you in March, we'll have the best information available in terms of being able to place those projects in the schedule. Many projects will require a source of operational funding, such as the Downtown Park and Health and Wellness Centers, and that will be considered as part of our analysis. The timing of certain projects may be influenced by the knowledge of similar projects in competing cities, and we're thinking primarily of the Convention Center and the fairgrounds, who are in competition with other cities. We're making an attempt to find out what those other cities are doing right now to develop a more competitive market so that we can make that a consideration as well. We've got a number of resources available to us, as I mentioned earlier, they're listed here. There's a significant body of documentation on many of the projects, a lot less documentation on some. We're doing everything that we can to develop lists of documentation and use that documentation in our analysis. We have been to all of the subcommittee meetings to date, we've reviewed pertinent city council minutes, so that we've tried to incorporate comments and concerns that we're aware of with respect to council for your considerations for how we prioritize these projects. We're now going to get into the specific project considerations, and we'll start with the Convention Center, and once again, these are listed, the order these are listed in is just by the budget, from most expensive budget to least expensive. As we said, we do have subconsultants, which we've engaged, which have specific expertise, many of them have expertise in the Oklahoma City market, such as convention sports and leisure, which is, which has done a lot of work in Oklahoma City, both on the Convention Center and the fairgrounds. But we're waiting to hear from the Site Selection Committee on their timeline for, and recommendations for a site selection. We will consider future development and economic impact. There's a question of whether or not it's, how important it is for a hotel to open simultaneously with the Convention Center, that's another consideration, and the possible need for coordination with other MAPS projects and with Project 180. Downtown Park, once again, we've hired a consultant who has specific knowledge of large urban parks, who will help us in this process. Other considerations are trying to make sure that the park opens and at least the, at least one phase of the park opens in 2014 to coincide with the opening of the Boulevard. And we're considering the timeline relative to the Boulevard and Devon construction, constraints due to the I-40 relocation and Skydance Bridge construction, and this project will most likely be phased with an upper and a lower park. Modern Street Car and Transit Hub, there are, obviously, there's the subcommittee, which we are working with and have attended all of their meetings. We have engaged a consultant from Colorado who's been involved in some aspect in virtually every modern street car development in the United States. He's actually going to be with us this week to help gather information and help us with the transit project. We are coordinating with 180 as, to the best of our ability. We obviously are waiting to get specific recommendations from the subcommittee, they've made some initial preferences known, and we're trying to work with them to make sure that Project 180 is impacted as minimally as possible. We're coordinating with the Downtown Park Convention Center. There's potentially significant lead time with respect to cars to end to track, and we're, those will be specific considerations with respect to our analysis. Determination of power supply, there are a number of different ways to power modern street cars, that's another part of our analysis. Future development and economic impact has, is a significant issue for the modern street car. We're studying the impact that it's had in other cities, and we'll bring that to bear as part of our analysis. And then also Project Phasing. And phasing, in this case, may be ordering street cars with a, you know, that have a potential two-and-a-half to three-year lead time prior to doing other work or laying track in an attempt to try and coordinate with Project 180. Oklahoma River Improvements, timing of major upcoming events, you may be aware that there are a significant number of potential events for the river, which we will take into consideration. Future development and economic impact, coordination with the American Indian Cultural Center and Museum, and Project Phasing. This is a project which is, can logically broken into a number of phases because there are specific projects, many of which do not depend on the other, that we can phase as appropriately as we can determine. State Fairgrounds, once again, convention sports and leisure will be assisting us with an analysis of that. We will coordinate with major state fair park and events, we have met with Tim O'Toole and have attended those subcommittee meetings as well. We'll consider future development and economic impact and possible design coordination with the May Avenue Streetscape Project, which is really the result of a prior bond issue. And Mr. O'Toole has asked us to make sure that we coordinate with that. Health and Wellness Centers. In some ways, this is the project that there is the least amount of information available. We are in the process of talking with a number of potential consultants who have experience in this area. In the meantime, a consultant has been selected to provide an initial programming for a prototype for the Wellness Centers. We will be working with that committee and with that team to try and understand as quickly as we can what their initial recommendations are going to be, but I think they will not finish their study until after we've presented our initial prioritization plan. Project Phasing, once again, we mentioned that this is a project that can be done geographically, and we also understand that city council has expressed a desire for one of these centers at least to be done early in the program schedule, and that will obviously be a consideration. Trails Improvements, land acquisition and potential right-of-way on some of the trails will be an issue, some of the trails have no land acquisition and right-of-way issues. Coordination with existing and proposed trails projects, we're working with city staff to make sure that we coordinate with them as well. Project Phasing, once again, geographically, it's fairly easy to make some determinations about how to split these projects up. And city council has also expressed a desire for some of these to begin early in the process, and we're considering that. Sidewalks, coordination with the city geo-bond sidewalk program, once again, we're working with Larry Ogil and Eric and his staff to make sure that we coordinate with them as well as we can. Phasing, once again, will most likely be geographically, and we also, once again, recognize city council's request that some of this work be done early in the process. The next steps, we obviously are here, as I said earlier, to get as many comments and suggestions as we can from council members so that going forward, we've made sure that your considerations are a part of our analysis. your considerations are a part of our analysis, so we welcome your input. As we mentioned earlier, in March, we'll have a joint meeting with city council and the MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board to review our first recommendation of the prioritization plan.
Actually, Mike, I think that date's been established for early April.
I'm sorry.
But that just got established. Yeah, you have outdated information.
Thank you, Mr. Ketch. Now, in March, we will present our first recommendation, and in April, we will have that review with the joint committee. And in May, we'll, we'll hope to have an approval of the MAPS III, the entire implementation plan. One consideration that is not, has not, is not on this presentation that we made today, but that is really the overriding concern of ADG and the MAPS staff goes back to an October 5th city council meeting where you identified your plans and priorities for the city, and your number-one priority was to maintain the trust of the citizens of Oklahoma City. We understand that, recognize it, it's something that we talk about virtually every day, and I want you to know that that is the single overriding concern that we have as we move forward. So, right now, I'd like to take any questions if you have any.
Just on two of the slides, Mike, would you bring the streetcar slide up? Mike, I'm wondering, future development, economic impact, does this vision right here shut the door on any, on any possible extension, rail extension, for example, to Midwest City or to the entertainment district, providing, you know, we see that as we move along, the determination of the power supply may not be as expensive as we initially anticipated, but without some mention of it, it looks to me as if that door's shut on any consideration for extension either to Midwest City or both.
I understand, Mr. Bellman, and having attended all of the transit subcommittee meetings, I can tell you that the transit subcommittee has deliberated on that, on that issue a number of times, and I think their recommendations will involve the possibility of future connections. I mean, while their primary responsibility is the modern streetcar system in downtown Oklahoma City, those issues have been addressed, I think, actually, particularly in a meeting that Mr., that Mr. Councilman White attended several weeks ago. So, now, what we have up here does not preclude that, but it will, we will really rely on the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Yeah, Sam, I can point out, in the alternative analysis committee, we've discussed that, and a lot of it, this is the only MAPS project where, because we expect some sort of federal match, we really don't know what the revenue is going to have. What we wanted to make sure was we could do what we said we were going to do on Election Day, but we anticipate some federal dollars that are going to allow us to expand the project, and until we know what those federal dollars are, we don't know. My opinion is that on the two routes you're talking about, which is really a heavy rail project that would connect Midwest City and Dell City, and perhaps Tinker Air Force Base, working with ODOT, and then the excursion line that might take us to the Adventure District, I think both of those economically are going to fit. For the amount of money it would take to open those lines up, I think we're going to see what a bargain that is, and we're going to be encouraged to put MAPS dollars in there in some sort of match and maybe work with some of the other municipalities. I think it's very much a part of it, but until we know the total amount of revenue, it's hard for anything to be, to be, you know, included or not included.
Best hearing it doesn't shut the door.
Yeah, and Mike, I would just say, in future, in future slides, that needs to be mentioned, because that is a significant part of what we'd like to see happen. We'd like to see those, you know, commuter rails open up and the excursion rail line open up in addition to the streetcar.
We'll certainly include that.
Okay.
I just want to clarify a point you made, and I think, Mike, you made it as well, but those are actually two different forms of rail transit. The MAPS piece was the streetcar, and what we're talking about for some of the regional transit would be a heavier rail system, so they're connected and complementary, but not the same form of transit.
Yeah, that's right, and they're existing. I mean, that's, so it's different in that respect, too, yeah.
Mayor.
Yes, Pete.
My comment, and I, again, I want to reiterate that I attended one of the meetings, and my comments previous, I think, were pretty well-received in terms of how they accepted those, in terms of trying to expand the vision of what the program was. In the most succinct way I can put it, I really want to see the original project service at least one person who's going to have to pay for it. The idea that we, it's just a downtown circulator system for tourists and people that someday we hope to bring downtown, is just, to me, is just not acceptable. I like the idea of moving it forward out northeast, where we do have a great opportunity to pick up federal funds if we do that, to move it to the Passao, move it someplace where there's a possibility of some citizen who actually lives in that area might be able to ride it to work or use it for something other than just a tourist kind of a thing. And so that's where I come from there. I think that's been pretty well-received with regard to the people on the, on the committee, maybe not with the touch of sarcasm that my comment is, but I think it's been pretty well-received. The second thing, I'd like to talk a little bit about the wellness thing. The idea that we are looking for a prototype troubles me some. I can see the wellness centers being vastly different, not a prototype at all. I could see one done by, first of all, given the stipulation that they have to pay for themselves, that the city doesn't have any money to fund them, so they're going to have to be done by institutions that can generate the revenues and utilize the facility to pay for the operation of the facility. I can see one done by one facility that might emphasize adult education, see education for seniors along with wellness. Another one that might be located in a facility where it would emphasize wellness, but also have an emphasis on the arts. Another one, maybe at Oklahoma, at the Health Sciences Center, that might be emphasize research and so forth in the care of folks like me that are getting older.
Prototype may have been a poor choice of words. I think the charge that's been given to this consultant is to identify the issues which can, issues and concerns and programming types that could be available in a specific location, but I think everyone understands, and this consultant understands, that they will not be ident, they may not be identical buildings with identical services and identical programs.
There are likely to be some common elements in all of them.
There will certainly be some common elements.
Well, I mean, commonly, they're going to have to be a wellness center to fit the, fit the thing, and, but, and there are, but I think also, they're going to have to pay for themselves. They're going to, we're going to put in, and that's one of the reasons I think that continued to emphasize, emphasize four or five facilities may be outside what we can do, because if we build a facility that someone else can come in and operate and where we don't have to continue to put money into it, it may cost a little more than we originally anticipated when we were talking about building four or five and paying the freight. I mean, we have to build a little different building, and so I think maybe the idea of three or four is a better idea. And I'm not harping on the prototype, except for the fact that they only have a couple of things in common, it seems to me. One is they have to be paid for, and two, they have to have, I mean, they have to, the operations have to be paid for, and two, they have to be, they have to have a wellness impact. Other than that, I can see them being vastly different. I can see them being, I think the RFPs that you would get back from the different institutions that might be, that might be willing to host them will take us a long ways to develop an ideas about what each one of them could be. I could see them being pretty dramatically different.
And our senior housing needs are going to expand greatly in the next few years. So, we're going to need, you know, partners that are involved in senior housing, too, to put out these RFPs. I agree, I agree. We ought to have completely open minds and let people dream about what we can do with these facilities, because I think, I think we're ahead of most of our peer cities in getting ready to deal with this influx of senior issues that are going to affect America. Yeah, Meg, do you want to say something?
Well, Pat, Pat mentioned last time of that, about the fact that one of the aspects, at least, ought to be some kind of mental, some kind of educational, or that kind of a piece to it, and I think that leads us kind of to the various educational institutions in the city, OCU, OCC, OU, the Metro Tex, those kind of people, I think that leads us to, but I can still see them being vastly different. I can see one being pure adult education emphasis in addition to the wellness. Another one, OCU, for example, could be emphasize the arts as part of their, their, whatever we want to call it. OU being the medicine side with the School of Nursing and all those different facilities that could come to play, almost a laboratory for that. I just don't want to do anything that would, would prescribe what we want too much and give them the opportunity to think outside the box and come up with something that really be innovative.
We are actually finalizing the negotiations with AIP, who's the consultant we hired to do the scope of work analysis, and this came up last week. What I would think that you will see in the contracts that will come before council in the next week or so is one that has a basic scope of services, just as you've mentioned, something that's core for all, but that we're going to leave an openness about each of them so that as we go onto those different geographic areas or those communities, that they can self-program and make them specific to those individual sites. So, that is being considered, and you'll see that as a part of the scope in the contract before you next week.
I hope that that's reality, because, you know, sometimes I have a problem with some of these consultants, because they do come in too many times with this here just-in-the-box program, and like, like the concerns of Councilman White. We've talked about this from day one, that no part of Oklahoma City has to be the same as it relates to a health and wellness program, and this is not something that, that's new in reference to America right now. If you look at every publication in the United States, you're going to find some major article addressing the issues of senior health, and, you know, and all you have to do is look at some of the programs from the YMCA to the Salvation Army and, you know, world, you know, all over the United States, you're going to find a lot of programs that have type of issues with seniors. But we have a concern here that we have, for a long time, not looked at the partners that exist in this city, and that's our institutions of higher level. And in the metropolitan area, in this county, you have an abundance of expertise in various areas of health, and for us to, to go through this with a process of a consultant that never goes out and look to see how any of these institutions could partnership with this, this process of these health and wellness centers, I think it's just a waste of time, and I think it's not a good serve of our money, and that was my concern when we talked about the subcommittees, and then we were talking about this consultant. I think that the best, the best move in this would have been just let the subcommittees, especially this subcommittee, with the makeup of the committee, to engage in the community and look and see what's the real need of the various parts of this city. You look at the county health statistics, and they'll tell you that the ZIP codes is a good indicator of where your major health problems are and your senior population is, and I think those are some of the factors that we surely, clearly should take into consideration, and we just, you know, I just want to see the opportunity being given to those other institutions that some of them have already called and asked. I mean, before we even had the vote, there was the calls being made, and I just think that a consultant has to look farther than just looking at a prototype of something someplace else and not looking at the different partners that we have here in Oklahoma City, and I just hope that that's, you know, part of this whole engagement that the consultant is going to be a part of.
And it is, it's very much a part of that, and you have my assurance that that'll be done. We also have attendance by the partners at a lot of the subcommittee meetings, so they've made themselves well-aware. They've been attending on a monthly basis, and so I do want you to have that, that knowledge that we're moving forward with them, and so that we can make this a coordinated effort.
Potential partners.
Gary?
Well, listening to this discussion, I can't help but keep going back in my own mind to the fact that if there was a, let me back up, the consultant's task that I think is the hardest part is going to be identifying what that audience is out there, and is, you know, the need, is there a pin-up need that's not being met, and is there's an organization that's willing to take it on to, to run the thing, because I just can't help but feel like if there was an audience or a pin-up need, and if there was somebody that thought they could make a go of it, they'd be out there already. The only thing we can bring to the equation is we're going to build them a building so that there's not capital debt to retire, and can an organization do something not having that involved with, with what's going on? So, in one way, I agree that they're all going to look different, because you're going to have to figure out what the need is in that area, number one, and who thinks they can at least break even running the thing, and on the other hand, we have the inference in all of the maps that we were going to build wellness centers, too. So, I just see a tremendous task from the consultant trying to identify what these things are actually going to serve and what, who that audience is out there, because I just can't help but believe that if it was a doable deal, it would have been done by now somewhere.
Larry?
Just a comment, having attended several of the subcommittee meetings, especially talking about the wellness center, I think the wellness subcommittee, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, is very much in tune and harmony, Skip, with the fact that we are going to require an outside partner to operate that center, and that the parameters set up for the city's operation of the center is basically zero, and I think the partners, potential partners around town also are well aware of the opportunity of what we're looking for, and I see the consultant, in conjunction with the subcommittee, in conjunction with the input from this council, of coming together, and the final product will be, I think, exactly what you all have articulated here. So, I'm very confident, from what I've observed in the, in the subcommittee meeting, that they're on their correct path to do that.
Fran?
And, Ma, I think I understand, Eric, that the subcommittee has asked that the task, one of the, the early task of the consultant is to understand this audience through focus groups, that they're tasked to do that. That's, in itself, Skip, a major undertaking, and if you look at the scope of work here outlined, I think the primary responsibility is this level of nature and interest of potential operating partners. That's looking at these institutional partners, and I think that's going to take a tremendous amount of lead work through this, through this consultant study, bring back to the committee, but I don't think it gets outside the parameters of anything we're talking about using this consultant. It just, it just focuses where we all want to go, and there's the focus, the level and interest of potential operating partners, really to understand the magnitude and the difference and uniqueness of these partners through that kind of study is going, I think, going to be invaluable.
Any other comments?
I got one on another project.
Okay.
If I could get to that, go to the fair, fair ground. At the risk of opening this up for something else, I'd like to see, under the considerations of it, you know, the state fair board did a master plan, and all of the preliminary talk about the MAPS III projects and so forth centered on what they proposed in their master plan and some of the cost estimates, is there, I'd like to see, under your specific considerations, that it coordinates with or reviews or does something with the fair master plan out there, because if you looked at all the stuff that we did in the campaign and all of that, it centered around those projections of what the state fair board had identified in their master plan.
That is one of the resources that we've already begun to look at, but we'll make sure that it gets included specifically on this slide.
If I could just piggyback on that, then, a number of these projects have master plans that preceded MAPS III efforts, and so I'm sure you are, but just to, you know, remember that the trails and the river all have plans that should be.
Absolutely. I mean, the city has a sidewalk plan, a master sidewalk plan, trails plans, there is a river study, all of those, we have all of those, and those are all being considered as part of our analysis, yeah.
All right, anything else? Anything else?
Master or unmastered? May we have a hard copy of this presentation?
Absolutely. Certainly. I really appreciate the input today. It's exactly what we're looking for as we go down. We haven't made the decisions yet. The council's input is obviously very, very important as we go forward. I think Mr. McAdoo's pointed out how well that the Subcommittee, that the Advisory Committee and the Subcommittees are very, very engaged, and there's other stakeholders that are attending those meetings, and we've got a, a pretty broad public input process in place, and that's important, to have that input into the process. You guys are the board of the directors that are going to be held accountable, so your input is very, very important, too, as to the direction that we're going on that. And I think, I appreciate the way Mike pointed out that, you know, one of the, the top council priorities is to maintain the citizen confidence out there. And staff understands that, our consultants understands that, and we need to make sure that we are able to provide a program that meets the needs of, of what the citizens want. So, so thank you very much for your input this morning.
In that respect, the Subcommittee meetings, as is the Oversight Committee, are public meetings, and any citizen, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, is more than welcome to come and sit in and listen to what's going on.
Yes, I mean, we, we're publishing all the Subcommittee meetings on the city's website with all the other cities' meetings. We actually have the Convention Center Subcommittee meeting at about a half hour at 10:30 at 420 West Main.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your input.
Only other thing this morning I'd like to mention is we do have the 2010 Year-End Neighborhood Science Sweep report, and this is a program the council initiated a number of years ago about getting neighborhoods involved in the science sweep, and, and we have made progress in that, and that, that program continues to work well.
Good. All right, citizens to be heard. Has anyone signed up? All right, guess we're ready to adjourn.
I didn't sign up.
Absolutely, come on forward.
Sky Kayes, President, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 123, 1624 South Agnew. I wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of the Fraternal Order of Police to thank the mayor, the city council, the business community, the citizens of Oklahoma City, and the citizens of this great state for the overwhelming love and support that they've shown Chad Perry and his family during this time in which he is in a fight for his life. He is in critical condition, in ICU at a local hospital. As most of you know, he was brutally attacked last week, and three people are jailed at this time because of that attack. The officers, the men and women of the Oklahoma City Police Department, work hard to keep citizens of our community safe, and we greatly appreciate the support and the love that the citizens have and still continue to show our police department. I would ask that the members of council, the mayor, and the citizens of this city continue to keep Chad Perry and his family in their prayers and ask the Lord for his speedy recovery. And that's all I have, I just wanted to say that.
Thank, very appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We are ready to adjourn, and we're adjourned.